Hi, how are you? Great, I love that. Okay, great, thanks. Uh, so do we have a certain seat? That's about it, yeah.
Eventually you all will find your... It seems like people gravitate to the same seats after a while. They're just, that becomes their seat, you know?
Natural seating order.
What did you say, Ruben? Sorry? No, no.
That was Wade's seat, Wade's gone. Yeah.
We got so accustomed to our crew for a while, yeah. But it's gonna be great, we're excited. Oh yeah, I think she's putting it after you sit. See, it's almost, maybe pick your space? Is that what you're doing, Autumn? I might be speaking out of turn. I got a message from Mary Ray. She has, like, she popped a tire on her car. She has a flat, so she has to deal with it, so she's not gonna make it. Well, I think Steph is still chairing the meeting. She's just chairing it remotely. You forgot? Yeah, so you're, so you're okay? I might have to get the deets on that from you.
Flat tires or no flat?
No. I know, especially because I have no idea how to change it. When you're in a rush, when you're hurrying.
I drive on construction in New York, I drive sites a lot.
So that could happen to you all.
Good evening, Chair Ralph. I'm just checking in to make sure you can hear us. And I think we can hear you, so that sounds great. All right, we're still getting ourselves a little bit settled in the room here, but we'll check in shortly.
Actually, I did find an opportunity with, on campus, which is really nice, but it's, I'm doing a little interview thing for next week, but it's a little unsure if they'll hire me before the school year starts. It's just working within the office, like, if they feel like it.
Security calls, kind of thing?
I think more just, you know, something. At least that's what I can tell from the description. But I guess we'll find out.
Chair Ralph, this is Patricia Deefendorfer. We are, I think, about settled here in the room. So whenever you'd like to get started, and if you need us help, help letting you know who all is in the room here, we can also assist with that. Okay. Good, yeah, go ahead.
I'm far away. We today welcome to the July 22 edition of the Portland Planning Commission. We have quorum and are ready to roll. And who is not here? Maybe we can do that.
Chair Ralph, the only person who's not here is Vice Chair Omera. She just let us know that she had a flat tire and is detained, so she's not gonna be able to join us today.
Oh, bummer. Oh, well, I hope roadside assistance gets to her quickly. Thank you all for being here. We have, I don't like, we have new commissioners, and I wonder if everyone could perhaps go around the room and quickly introduce themselves.
My name is Lucas Pollak. I am serving as the current commissioner.
Brian Ames, Commissioner.
Erica Thompson, Vice Chair.
David Knowles.
Dreisha Brannon.
Eli Spivak.
Ruben Alvarado.
Thanks, everyone, for being here, and it's very exciting to have quorum with our new commissioners. I'll start by asking for any items of interest from commissioners. Anyone? Okay. Well, before we continue, do we have, do we have a letter that we need to, that we need to get a heads up on before we go? No.
Chair Ralph, I believe you might be thinking of our latest project, the Code Alignment Project letter, but I believe Autumn is telling me that we got the head nod approval on that letter of last meeting.
Okay, in the annotated, it said the USB, and that was a long time ago.
Sorry, that is a carryover, that's a mistake, a carryover from the past.
Love it. Well, then, how about we'll go from that to Director Deefendorfer for the Director's Report.
All right. Good afternoon, Commissioners. It might be just a little too early to say good evening, right? Good afternoon. So just want to say hello and welcome, particularly to welcome our new Commissioners and our reappointed Commissioner, Commissioner Spivak. We really are so excited to have this new membership of our Planning Commission and look forward to working together and developing the collaborative, you know, interactions in spirit that I think has been characteristic of the Planning Commission. And we as staff are really looking forward to supporting you and the work that you do to help the city through the legislative process with many, many important projects. So as you can all see, we did have successful approval of confirmation of the Planning Commissioners last week, and just in the nick of time, because here we are for our next meeting, and we have quorum, as Chair Ralph said. So we're very happy. And please do let us know how we can support, best support you as you are getting acclimated to this new role. So, thank you. I think that's really all I have to update on right now. So if there are any questions, I can answer very briefly for you. Happy to do that. Otherwise, I'm happy, Chair Ralph, for us to just launch into the agenda. Thank you.
Beautiful. Thank you very much, Director Deefendorfer. On first order of business is our consent agenda, which is primarily the minutes from the last meeting. So I'm curious if we have someone who would be willing to be more vocal, since I can't see you. With deep apologies that this is the week that our family is on vacation.
Vice Chair Thompson, I'll make a motion to approve.
Thank you, Vice Chair Thompson. Is there a second?
Commissioner Ames, second.
Beautiful, thank you very much. And we can just go with an aye or a nay? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, beautiful. And congratulations to new Commissioners on your first commission duty. Your first big vote is the consent agenda. And we'll launch straight in from here to the Public Infrastructure Environmental Code Project. This is both a briefing and a hearing. So we'll first hear a brief presentation from staff and then invite testimony ahead of our deliberations. I don't believe that there actually is testimony that has signed up in advance, but I could be proven wrong. And in the interim, please, Daniel Sobbing and Jeff Cottle, tell us all of the news.
Thank you. Chair Ralph, I'm just jumping in here because unfortunately Jeff Cottle had a family emergency and had to, had to go out of town. So Daniel and I, I'm gonna open this up very briefly, and Daniel and I are gonna make this presentation. So please bear with us, thank you. And I think you're correct, at this point, we do not have any people signed up for, to testify, but we did have some letters in the map app, and we can describe that content a little bit for you. So, Daniel, if you wouldn't mind queuing up the presentation and...
Autumn Buckridge, for the record. I will actually be doing the slides today because we had a little bit of a technical issue. So give me one moment.
Okay, when you're ready, Autumn, we can go to the next slide. Okay, sorry, okay. Yeah, so the agenda today, as you can see on the, I have to put my glasses on so I can see, but as you can see there on the slide, we're gonna give a brief introduction of, you know, generally what this project is. We're gonna talk a little bit about environmental zones, give a little bit of a primer to introduce particularly our new Commissioners to the environmental zones and what they are, how they work. Then we're gonna give an overview of what the proposed zoning code amendments are. And Daniel will do a brief summary of the public outreach that was conducted, and generally, a little bit about what we've heard, particularly from the letters that are in the map app. So, next slide, please. So, just very quickly, this package is a set of targeted code amendments to the city's environmental zones to facilitate needed improvements to public infrastructure and to allow for effective management of trees, vegetation, and other natural resources. The proposed amendments aim to ensure natural resource protection while also recognizing the need for the operation maintenance, in some case, replacement of public facilities. And we'll go into more of a description of what type of facilities we're talking about here. This package also includes a variety of minor amendments that will update, include updates to site enhancements and noticing requirements, review procedures, and other sort of minor technical changes that Daniel will talk about. And they mostly represent a bit of cleanup, somewhat similar to, you know, the recap project. Many of you are familiar with code projects that we call the Regulatory Improvement Code Amendment Project, where we make relatively minor amendments to the code in order to keep the code up to date and responsive to current issues. And so in some ways, this is a little bit of an E-zone recap, if you will, minor code cleanup. Next slide, please. So, public infrastructure, of course, serves vital functions, including water delivery, waste treatment, and flood protection. Parts of these systems, excuse me, are decades old and long overdue for rehabilitation and replacement. Modern safety standards, building codes, and increased capacity needed to serve population growth mean that these structures sometimes have to be expanded or enlarged during that replacement. For example, the Bureau of Environmental Services will be renovating or replacing many of their pump stations in the coming years. Many of these facilities are in environmental zones, so hence the need for some of these amendments, which will make that process a little bit easier and smoother for those kinds of projects. So Daniel will shortly explain how the environmental zones will work and how this project envisions being able to facilitate some of those infrastructure, public infrastructure improvement projects that we are talking about here. And I think this is my final slide. I just want to, next slide, please, Autumn, thank you. This is just to clarify, or to, you know, specifically, what actions that Planning Commission will be taking with respect to this project. So Planning Commission will be making a recommendation to City Council, so, and staff is proposing that Planning Commission recommend that City Council adopt the Public Infrastructure Environmental Code Project Proposed Draft and recommend amending the following chapters of Title 33, the Planning and Zoning Code, as listed on the slide there and as you will learn about in more detail shortly. So I think that concludes my portion, and I'll hand it over to Daniel. Thank you. Oh, can I, pardon me, I just want to make one other quick comment here, really, because it could come up, and I just want to make sure it's clear off the bat. This, this project does not change, does not do any mapping changes. This project does not change where environmental zones apply or don't apply on actual properties within the city. This is purely limited to a code project, a project that is amending text, that is, you know, text amendments, language in the zoning code. So I just wanted to make sure that was very clear. Thank you.
Sorry about that. Thank you, Patricia. Thanks, Planning Commission, for listening to our presentation. And I've got a few stopping points along the way, so if there's any questions or comments or concerns that come up as we're going, got some natural breaks along the way, so feel free to jump in when I get to those. Next slide, please. So I'm gonna start with a basic introduction to environmental zones, give you a primer on what they are, where they are, what they do. And so we have several different types of environmental overlays that are mapped throughout the city. We typically apply those overlays to streams, forests, wetlands, and some other important natural resources that are identified in our natural resource inventory. Next slide. And so this project primarily pertains to the conservation zone and the protection zone. Those are our two most commonly mapped environmental overlays. We do have some minor changes to the Pleasant Valley Overlay Zone, which just applies in the far southeast corner of the city, and the River Overlay, which applies to the Willamette River. But mostly conservation and protection zones, for the most part. And so we have environmental overlay zones as a compliance mechanism. State Land Use Planning Goal V requires all jurisdictions in the state of Oregon to identify important natural resources and to do a analysis to determine which resources are important, should be protected, and where development should be allowed, which could potentially impact those resources. And we also comply with Metro's Title 13, which is nature and neighborhoods. That kind of sets a, like, a basis for how Goal V programs have to work within the metro region. So all jurisdictions have to comply with State Land Use Planning Goal V, and they also have to demonstrate compliance with Title 13. So the city has an adopted natural resource inventory. City Council adopted it in 2012. That inventory is a methodology for mapping resources, such as vegetation, wetlands, streams, water bodies, and flood plains. And then when we adopt natural resource protection plans, we go through an economic, social, environmental, and energy analysis to determine which resources should be protected. And the resources that are protected are identified in adopted inventories and plans. And we've been doing environmental overlays in Portland for quite a while now. The earliest environmental overlays were first applied in 1989, and a number of different area-specific natural resource protection plans were adopted in various different parts of the city since then. So we've got kind of a long history of natural resource protection. So this is a stopping point now, if there's any questions. Okay, can move on to the next slide. So how do environmental overlays work? So our overall kind of guiding principles for the E-zones are we operate on a no-net loss. If we apply an E-zone to a feature, we may allow development to happen near or within that feature, but typically, we're requiring some kind of mitigation to compensate for the impacts. So ultimately, we're hoping to get to a point where, even though we may lose some trees and we may fill some wetlands along the way, we'll end up with the same amount of resources when we're all done, because we'll offset those impacts. And we aim for consistency with how those regulations are applied to all applicants. So whether it's a public entity or a private entity, whether it's infrastructure development or a private house or commercial development, we tend to have consistent rules that apply to all of those types of developments and expect mitigation for all those types of development from all applicants. And we have a hierarchy where we expect that applicants will avoid impacts in natural resources whenever possible. When avoidance isn't possible, those impacts will be minimized, and those unavoidable impacts then will be mitigated. And we prioritize onsite mitigation whenever possible, but we also allow offsite mitigation or mitigation banking in some cases when necessary. And so again, we're focusing mostly on the protection overlay zone and the conservation overlay zone. The protection overlay zone is our more restrictive overlay. In general, private development is prohibited within the protection zone, but some development is allowed if it can prove that it serves a public benefit, or if the applicants can demonstrate that the development serves a public benefit. The conservation zone is more permissive. We sometimes colloquially call it the construction zone. You can impact natural resources there, but again, impact should be mitigated when that happens. And then there are a couple of approval pathways. You can either meet clear and objective standards, or you can go through a discretionary review process. And this slide illustrates these different approval pathways. So if you're developing, if you have a proposal for development in an environmental zone, the first question is, is the activity exempt? If it meets a list of exemptions that's in the environmental zone code, then you skip approval altogether. It's allowed by right. There's no requirement for a permit, no nothing. There's no fees, no process, you just do it. It's allowed by right. But if you don't meet one of those explicitly listed exemptions in the code, then you get on to the objective standards. And so if you, if you want to go through the standards process, you have to get a plan check. So you have to provide documentation, demonstrate that you meet those standards, and there's a plan check that's processed by city staff. The duration of the process is relatively short, just a couple of weeks in most cases, and the expense is minimal. But there is some cost for doing that environmental plan check. If you can't meet those objective standards, though, then you go down to discretionary review. And the particular flavor of discretionary review is environmental review, and it could be, we have type 1, type 2, 3, and 4. And as those numbers go up, the complexity and cost and delay goes up as well. And so, but in all cases, environmental review is gonna be more costly and more time-consuming than something that can meet standards. And I don't want to go into too much detail on this, but I just wanted to highlight that we have a tree code as well, both the E-zone code and the tree code. Protect trees in different ways, and they work with each other. So in some cases, there's overlapping regulations. In some cases, they apply separately. But it is, the tree code is a distinct entity, and the tree permitting process is distinct from the environmental zones. So I'm gonna go through some kind of basic diagrammatic examples of how an E-zone works. We've been talking about some principles, and I want to make it a little bit more concrete through some goofy illustrations that I drew. So let's imagine that this is a typical site somewhere. There's a stream running through the middle of the site, and there's some forest vegetation that's surrounding that stream. We apply a protection zone and a protection zone buffer to the stream itself, and then the forest vegetation that's contiguous to the stream is in the conservation zone. And so let's say you want to propose some development on the site. Let's build a house on it to get to this. We want to put the house in the back corner because it's tucked away away from the street. It's nice and scenic, but to get to that house, we're gonna have to cross the street. We're gonna have to put the stream in a culvert, and we're gonna have to remove about five trees to do this development. And it may be that you might not be able to meet standards by doing that, because the impacts to the stream might be too great, and it may be that the number of trees that need to be removed is too great to meet standards. So in that situation, you could find an alternative layout that could meet standards. So now we're not gonna cross the stream. We're gonna minimize tree removal. We'll shrink the size of the driveway. The building footprint might shrink. And now this development probably could meet standards in most cases. But maybe not. And so, and if you can't meet standards at all in any way, then you go through an environmental review process, and you do an alternatives analysis. You find what is the least impactful alternative that's feasible on the site. You figure out what the overall impacts are to the resources that would arise from implementing that proposal, and then you would propose mitigation to offset those impacts. Can stop really quick in case there's any questions? Okay, so that's kind of the basics of the E-zones. That's how they work in a nutshell. So let's dive into the amendments and what's in this package. So the general themes of what we're proposing here are streamlining the approval process. And as Patricia said, this is approval primarily of public infrastructure projects. This is, these are projects that previously would have gone through environmental review in most cases, and we're trying to find a standards pathway that would minimize the approval time and the cost of doing, of getting that approval. But we'd still be getting the same level of mitigation ideally that we would be getting if we were to go through environmental review. It's just streamlining the process. And typically, we're trying to provide a menu of alternatives. So we're allowing applicants to do their mitigation plantings or site enhancement requirements onsite. And if they can't do it offsite, we're allowing for advanced mitigation to occur offsite, and we're also allowing fee and lieu in some cases if it's not possible to do the mitigation by the applicant. The proposals are grouped into four different baskets of amendments. The first one being pump stations and flood control structures and the replacement of those facilities. The next one is natural area management, then tree removal and replacement, and finally, a grouping of miscellaneous technical amendments that don't fall into any of those four categories. And you see there's an asterisk there. There are a handful of amendments that are not strictly focused on public infrastructure, and I'll make note of that as we get to them, if there, because there are a few amendments that would just apply generally to some, to all types of development, not just infrastructure. And as we go through this presentation, in the proposed draft document that we provided to you, there's a table near the front of the document that lists out all the groupings of amendments. And it's got, there's numbers on the left-hand side of that table, item numbers. And so as we go through here, I'll refer to those specific item numbers so that you can reference to those in the table if you want. So going back to the diagramatic example, we kind of found that the bottom left-hand corner was the least impactful location for development on this particular site. But there are some types of development that you can't, even if you go through the alternatives analysis, you're not gonna be able to minimize the impacts. And a case in point is sewer pump stations. So throughout Portland and most cities, really, because fluids flow downhill, sewer lines tend to be built in the lowest-lying areas. Those tend to align with streams in a lot of cases. And so the sewer itself is in a pretty impactful location, being in a stream bed. And you have to have infrastructure that serves the sewer along the way, pump stations and various other structures that attend to that sewer line. And so by their very nature, these things have to be located in areas where they would be impacting natural resources. As Patricia said, the Bureau of Environmental Services is going to be replacing a whole bunch of sewer pump stations around Portland in the future. Because most of them are near streams, because the sewers themselves are near streams, we know that the sewer pump stations are going to have impacts on the environment just by nature of where they're located. And we know that if we go through that alternatives analysis, there's no way to move that pump station to a different location when it's replaced, because to do that, you'd have to move the whole sewer line, and we're not going to require that, because that would be even more impactful. So we know that when the pump station replaces... So, we know that when the pump station replacements have to happen, they have to happen in basically the same location. And so, if we can get the mitigation without going through that complicated alternatives analysis, it will streamline things and make it cheaper for everybody to get to the end of the process. And so, those of you that went on the tour a couple of weeks ago, we went to one of these pump stations that's in the process of being replaced. It's already gotten approval through environmental review, but the process hasn't started yet. So, we visited a mitigation site. They're doing offsite mitigation because this happens to be a very constrained site where the pump station basically is the entire site. There's no place to do mitigation on the site. Because of the proximity to the slough, it's going to be impactful to the riparian area, and a number of trees are going to be removed in that process. So, Bureau of Environmental Services identified an offsite mitigation location that we all saw. They have a mitigation plan where they're going to remove a bunch of invasive vegetation and plant a bunch of trees to offset those impacts. And because of the way the code works right now, they're going to have to do an environmental review that will do both things at the same time, approve the mitigation plan and approve the pump station replacement. We're hoping in the future that they could do the mitigation plan in advance, get that approved beforehand, and then come in and do the pump station through a set of standards. And so, it would streamline that process for the actual pump station design and approval. And so, we have an existing set of standards that apply to flood control structures. The existing standards are very narrowly tailored. This is item 21 in your table. We're proposing to add pump stations to that set of standards and to increase the allowed disturbance that could be done with those standards. We're also adding a flexible set of compliance, ways to comply with site enhancement requirements. So, you can do it in advance. You could do it through a fee and lieu, or you could do it onsite if there's space to do it. But this is a way to try to streamline that permitting and approval process. So, that's the first set of amendments. That was grouping number one, pump stations. Now, we're moving on to natural area management. So, item number eight in that table is we are exempting the removal of small native trees on city-managed natural areas. The reason that we're allowing this is because typically, when site enhancement, resource enhancement projects are done, tree densities, the density at which trees are planted is much higher than is beneficial in the environment because we're expecting a high amount of mortality. We'll plant 20 trees and assume that 12 will survive. But in some cases, the mortality is actually much lower than that, and maybe all 20 trees survive. And if you don't remove some of those trees, you'll get overcrowding. It won't be, you won't get the beneficial environmental impacts that you were expecting. And so, it's beneficial to remove a handful of those trees to try to get a better outcome. So, we're going to exempt the removal of those trees as long as it's done early on when the trees are six inches or less in size. We have beaver management devices. Beavers are really useful, important, beneficial parts of the environment. They build dams that block culverts and flood infrastructure in people's basements. And the typical remedy is to remove those dams, but then the beavers come back in and rebuild the dam again. So, either, the only real solution there is either lethal removal or come up with an alternative. And the alternative is a bypass device where you can build a way for the water to flow around the beaver dam where the beaver doesn't know where it's going. It doesn't know to plug the hole. But the beaver stays in the environment. It continues to do the resource enhancement that they're known for doing. You don't have to lethally remove them, but you don't get damage to your infrastructure. So, we're exempting that, and it currently wouldn't be allowed without environmental review under current code. And then, the last item on the slide, item number 17, is allowing for floating vegetated structures. This is done in areas like along the levees where vegetation isn't allowed to grow because the roots of trees would undermine the levees. So, they have to continually clear the levees off, but it's important to get habitat in the Columbia Slough and these other places where we have managed structures. So, by putting floating vegetation in the water body itself, we get the shading that trees would normally provide. We get the habitat values that trees would normally provide, but we don't risk damage to the levee, and we're creating an exemption to allow this to happen where currently would have to go through environmental review. Oh, sorry, a standard, not an exemption. Yeah. So, still, under the natural areas management grouping, we're exempting vegetation removal for cultural harvesting. We visited a site during that field trip last week where Bureau of Environmental Services is working with a group of indigenous people that come out and they help manage that site, and they engage in cultural practices and removal of some vegetation for cultural purposes. Technically, a lot of those activities would require environmental review right now. We're creating an exemption to allow those activities to continue to happen without going through environmental review. Parks Bureau is contemplating a similar program. I don't think it's up and running yet, but they would be allowed to start up a program under this as well. And then, we are creating an exemption for managing vegetation on the levees that are managed by the Urban Flood Safety and Water Quality District. They already do this activity, but it's not explicitly exempted in the code. Now, that would be explicit. Thank you. And actually, we can pause right now. Do we have any questions on those first two groups, grouping one or grouping two? Okay, we'll move on to the next one.
This is Chair Ralph. I just want to appreciate, I have never heard of a beaver where before, and I'm delighted. Thank you for bringing that into my life.
Even better, the name that's commonly used is Beaver Deceiver, which I think is just fun to say. So, grouping number three is tree removal and replacements. So, there's an existing exemption that allows for the removal of dead, dying, and dangerous trees. And note, there's an asterisk on this one, so this applies generally, not just to public infrastructure. So, you can remove dead, dying, and dangerous trees in the conservation or protection zone by exemption. But currently, the exemption stipulates you can't do it during development. So, if you pull a development permit, you can't remove your dead and dying trees. You can only remove the trees that are immediately around your development area. And so, if you have a dangerous tree somewhere else on the site that's not part of the approved development, that tree is protected and can't be removed even though it's a hazardous thing that could hurt somebody. So, you could remove it when your development's done, or you could have removed it before the development started, but during that permitting process for your site development, you can't remove it currently. So, we're getting rid of that stipulation. Also, under the dead, dying, and dangerous exemption, when you remove a tree using that exemption, you're required to retain the wood of that tree onsite. Any piece of wood that's more than 12 inches in diameter needs to stay on the site. It's important because that wood provides habitat for wildlife. As it decomposes, it returns the nutrients back into the soil. So, in natural areas, when a tree falls, it's really important to retain that tree onsite and retain that wood. But on small sites, that can be an onerous burden, and we've seen with recent ice storms that have taken down trees all throughout the city that some people that have small residential lots have giant trees that are just stuck in the middle of their lot, and they're not allowed to remove them. So, we're exempting lots that are less than 10,000 square feet. We already were exempting lots that were less than 7,000 square feet, I believe, so we're just making it a little bit more generous exemption than it was previously. And then, this final thing on the slide here at the bottom, we have an allowance for removing trees using standards if you're doing development. The trees have to be within 10 feet of the structure or the driveway that's being proposed, but there's a cap on how many trees you can remove, and it's based on the diameter inches of trees. So, if you remove a 12-inch tree, that's one. If you remove five 12-inch trees, you're up to 60, and you keep adding to that total up until 225 currently is the limit. And the reason that 225 limit is problematic is because you also have tree replacement requirements in the code, and it's not just one for one. Especially for larger trees, it becomes multiple trees for one. So, if you remove 225 diameter inches of trees, you might be replacing hundreds of trees on the site. And in a lot of sites, especially residential development, you just don't have space to put hundreds of trees on there. So, people crowd them all into one spot, and then you get high tree mortality, and it doesn't work very well. So, we're reducing the number of diameter inches of trees that can be removed to a level that might be more reasonable to be planted on a residential site. Next slide. And in addition to that, we're creating some more flexible options for tree replacement, too. So, we're allowing a fee and lieu that already exists to be used for native trees. Currently, the fee and lieu only applies for non-native trees, so if you have a bunch of native tree removal, they have to be onsite. Now, we're allowing the fee and lieu, so it can be, they can be planted offsite. We call this fee and lieu the revegetation fee. It's currently managed by the Bureau of Environmental Services. Because it's so restrictive and ill-defined in the code currently, almost nobody uses it, so we don't collect very much money in it. And it's not enough funds currently to really develop a program that was effectively managed by environmental services. So, we're going, part of this process is we're going to revamp that code, reassign it to the urban forestry department. They have a natural area management group that can more effectively manage these funds. And we're clarifying when the funds can be used and opening it up to be used in more situations than it could previously. So, hopefully, we'll be able to collect a pool of money that will be large enough to create a more effective program. And again, you see the asterisks here, so this is something that will apply not just to public infrastructure, but development generally. Wildfire hazard tree removal is also under grouping number three. This is something that was specifically requested by the Water Bureau, and they've been working with Portland Fire and Rescue to identify situations where there's potential hazards to existing public infrastructure. They were specifically highlighting water tanks in parts of the city that are already at risk for wildfires. These water tanks are providing water pressure that can be used to fight fires in the event of a conflagration. We know with climate change that wildfires are only going to become more and more common in this region, and it's only a matter of time before one hits Portland, and we're going to need the capacity to fight those fires. Currently, there's no real, you can remove trees within 10 feet of buildings, but that's not really enough for what's needed to protect these facilities. The facilities themselves are built out of steel and concrete, which are resilient materials, but they have fittings that are made out of plastic. They have electronic circuitry that helps to control the flow of water. That's all susceptible to damage from fires, and so, we're allowing the creation of a buffer up to 30 feet around these structures. We're still requiring tree replacement, and so, we're allowing it to happen either through advanced mitigation or a fee and lieu if there's not space to do it onsite. So, we're hoping to not have a net reduction in our city's tree canopy, but we're hoping this will be a safer outcome for these facilities that are so critical. And next slide. And we're restricting where this can be used, only to environmental overlay zones and only within the designated wildfire hazard zone. And there's some confusion because there was a statewide planning process where they were trying to create a statewide wildfire hazard zone mapping. That process has since been canceled. It's not happening anymore at the statewide level, but we have an adopted wildfire hazard zone map that's part of our building code in Title 24. It's managed by Portland Fire and Rescue, and there are criteria in the code for how that map can be updated in the future. And so, we're restricting the use of that tree removal to just areas that are in the designated wildfire hazard zones. And then, finally, into the grouping number four, I can pause right here if there's any questions.
I have one.
Yeah.
On the intersection of the, Eli Spivak for the record. Leaving downed wood, is there an allowance to remove downed wood over 12 inches in fire hazard zones? Because sometimes, that's kind of a good practice.
There is not currently, no.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, and I mean, but there's no, so, the only time that the requirement to retain the downed wood comes into play is when you remove a dead, dying, or dangerous tree under that exemption. So, in theory, if you didn't take the tree down, then you don't really trigger that requirement. But I think the way it's, I think the spirit of the way the exemption is written right now is you don't remove downed trees ever. And so, yeah, so there's no provision really for wildfire hazard zones? Okay, so, on to the miscellaneous technical amendments. So, we have public noticing requirements that are in a different chapter of the zoning code. Those are relatively recent addition to our zoning code. There is an older set of public noticing requirements that are in the E zone code that only apply to sites that are in E zones. They predate the city's public noticing requirements. They're largely duplicative of those public noticing requirements, but they apply slightly differently. And so, we feel like the public noticing requirements that are in the other code chapter in the 600s are adequate to meet the public noticing needs and that the ones that are in the E zone code, because they're largely duplicative, are largely superfluous, and we're proposing to remove those. So, applicants would still be subject to the normal public noticing that's required anytime you're doing development that's more than 10,000 square feet in building area, but these E zone code-specific ones we're proposing to remove. And then, we're making amendments to existing standards for right-of-way development. One of those amendments is in stormwater planters. Currently, the code explicitly says if you do a stormwater planter that's part of the right-of-way that's in the E zone, you need to plant native vegetation in that planter. We've heard from PBO and from the Bureau of Environmental Services, native vegetation doesn't really thrive in stormwater planters, so they just have to go in and replace it if they do that. So, we're removing that requirement only as it applies to stormwater planters. So, right-of-way standards, we're, these are two other right-of-way standards that are being amended. One is there's a limit on the width of paved roadway that can be built within the right-of-way. So, even if you have a 60 or 70-foot wide right-of-way, you can't meet standards for rights-of-way unless it's 26 feet of pavement or less. So, we're removing that restriction so that you could pave out the full width of a right-of-way if you needed to for some reason. There are still limitations on the total disturbance area and some setback requirements, but we're removing that limit on the width of paved right-of-way that's allowed. Another thing that we're doing is, this graphic that's on the screen right now illustrates the distinction between the transition area and the resource area. And this gets really wonky, but basically, when you have a line on the map that's an E zone, that line in for the first 25 feet is what's known as transition area. The development standards say that basically, all the most restrictive regulations that apply in the E zone code don't apply in that first 25 feet in that transition area. So, if you're building a house, the house can be fully within that transition area with no real restrictions. But once you cross that line into the resource area, then there are some restrictions and setback requirements. The standards that apply to right-of-way development didn't recognize that distinction. So, your roadway basically acted like there's no transition area, but if you're building a house, there was a transition area. So, we're just bringing, we're harmonizing the right-of-way standards with the development standards and making it so the setbacks don't apply in that transition area, the same way that they don't apply if you're building a house or a building. And then, finally, we have an allowance that you can reduce your front setback if it's the, the setback is on the side of the right-of-way. Your base zone is going to specify that you have a setback of 10 or 20 feet depending on the zone. If you have an E zone on your site, you can reduce that setback to zero feet or anything between what's specified in the base zone and zero. But currently, that does not apply to accessory dwelling units. So, your house could be built right up at the lot line, but your ADU still has to have a 40-foot setback or be behind the house. We're now changing it or proposing to change it to allow the ADU to take advantage of that same allowance for zero lot line development if a applicant so desires. So, that's the end of it. I left out a few of the amendments, but that's the majority of what's being proposed. It's a relatively small package, and those are kind of the more consequential, substantial things that we went over there. So, I want to kind of go over what we've done in terms of public outreach and engagement up to this point. So, we released a discussion draft in April. We had a public comment period on that discussion draft that lasted through May. And during that period, when the discussion draft was out for public comment, we had a couple of open houses. Both of them were offered with an online option, and one of them also had an in-person option as well. During that discussion draft time, when it was available, we also did direct outreach to a number of environmental organizations, watershed councils, Ford Alliance of Oregon, those types of groups that generally have an interest in environmental regulations. We did a direct outreach to a number of tribal governments in the region, direct government-to-government contact to see if the tribal organizations had any comments to submit about the project. And we have an email list that people can sign up on on our website, and we currently have more than 100 subscribers to that email list. And then, after that comment period was over, we went back and revised the draft to produce the proposed draft, and that proposed draft was published on our website on June 20th. And at that time, the MAP app went live to accept public comment. And so, just to recap what Patricia said at the start, this is what the staff proposal is. This is what we're asking the planning commission to recommend to city councils. So, we're asking the planning commission to recommend that city council adopt the public infrastructure environmental code project proposed draft, and we're asking the planning commission to recommend that city council amend the listed code sections as described in that draft. And then, we have one more. Oh, okay, actually, I think I might have left out in the version that you have, but I did summarize the comments that we've received so far in the slide that I don't think made it into this version. But we've received 13 comments so far through the MAP app, and the majority of those comments were specifically about the river environmental overlay, which we do have a few, a handful of amendments to in this project, and they're mostly just to bring that, the river environmental overlay into consistency with the other environmental overlay zones. But these specific comments were about vegetation management and the river overlay, and they were requests for more leniency in terms of allowing tree removal in public parks and allowing for the pruning of vegetation in public parks. The river environmental overlay is more restrictive in that sense. A lot of things that are allowed by exemption in the E zone code go through standards in the river overlay. So, these requests that are coming in are asking for a similar set of exemptions. are, are asking for a similar set of exemptions as to what exists in the E-zone code. And then we got some comments. The port of Portland weighed in and asked that some of these things that are applying primarily to public infrastructure also apply to the port of Portland. They're currently not included in any of the standards or exemptions that we're proposing currently. I think that's the majority of the, the 13 comments are those, those two things. And then finally, next steps. So we have a work session coming up on August 12th, and then we have a, a final work session slash recommendation coming up on September 23rd. And assuming that's the end of the process here, then we would move on to city council in fall of this year. And that's the end of the presentation. Open it up for questions and comments.
Thank you so much, Daniel. And before we go to, first, I'd like to do, back up now that we've heard the presentation. Does anyone have any disclosures that they need to make before we go into hearing? Okay, seeing none. Are there any questions for clarification?
One.
Yeah. Commissioner Knowles.
How do we access the public comments? I think you gave us some instruction on the map app. So that's where those are located.
Yes, Patricia Deefender for the record. Commissioner Knowles, there is a, a link to the map app. I believe we may have provided that in, in an email to you. We can certainly provide that again right now if you'd like to have access to that. There's also, since we're having a work session next meeting and you're not, you know, we're not anticipating a vote today, you will have additional time to view the map app and read those comments. So we can certainly make sure you have the link to the map app. And that's where we use typically for our planning projects, we use that system to invite public comment so that it is easily accessible for everyone.
This is Autumn Buckridge for the record. One clarification. We don't allow chat on these Zoom meetings to avoid serial communications that are not visible to the public. So I'll share the access for the map app outside of the meeting, after the meeting, and we can connect on training on how to do that testimony review.
Thank you for that question, Commissioner Knowles. Any other questions for clarification?
I had a question. Brian Ames for the record. The two kind of public comments that you summarized, one with the, the river overlay and the other one from the port. Are you considering those as you move forward and continue to develop this plan?
We would consider them, yeah. I mean, we've been doing direct engagement with Parks Bureau in terms of, we've, we've reached out to all of our partner bureaus that manage natural areas, and we haven't heard anything specific from our liaisons at Parks. I think it, from what it, it looks like the people that have made those comments were, were from Parks Bureau, but they were going outside of the normal communication process. So we want to continue to work with Parks and determine if it would be appropriate to make any additional amendments. I think the concern that they raised is part of kind of the nature of the river overlay. It was when it went through the Planning and Sustainability Commission at the time, I think the intention was to make it more difficult to do or to make it more, to have more, more regulation on vegetation management within the Willamette River waterfront, specifically because the Willamette River is so impacted and it is a critical area where we have endangered species. And any remaining vegetation that's in that area is relatively more important than trees elsewhere in the city. And so I think the intention was to try to limit tree removal in that area, and that's why the permitting and approval process for vegetation in that area is, is stricter. But I think we're open to continuing that conversation, and it's not out of the question to potentially amend those, those regulations.
Yeah, thanks.
I do, Patricia Deefender for the record. I do want to sort of address just one other aspect to your question, Commissioner Ames, about the port specifically. And I think that letter from the port was received today so that we, we just, you know, got that letter. But I, I think it's important to understand that the port really is different. They're, they are not typically, I mean, they, they may be in some instances, but they're not typically developing public infrastructure on the, on the port properties. They do, you know, they lease property to private entities that develop, you know, they do regular development, I guess is what I'm trying to say, as opposed to public infrastructure. So the port kind of functions a little bit more like a private developer. So I think for that reason, we would not necessarily consider applying these same exemptions to the port because they engage in a lot of different kinds of development and not just, you know, infrastructure projects.
Commissioner Thompson, can you describe again the process for off-site mitigation as an option? Because I'm just trying to figure out the balance between supply and demand for that. And if somebody, if, if there's a project where it will not be possible to do onsite mitigation, do the, the review process for establishing the off-site mitigation, like when that happens? And just the surety of having that available and allowing that project to move forward?
Yeah, so there is an existing provision in the code that allows for resource enhancement projects to be done, to be approved through environmental review. It's not currently used as an advanced mitigation option, but it could be, and that's what we're proposing to use it for going forward. And these, and so the way it would work is, is an applicant would come in. They would identify a site that was probably a degraded site that didn't have very good natural resources and propose some resource enhancement within a specified area. They would have to document what kind of resource enhancement they had done. Typically, that involves removing invasive species and then planting trees, shrubs and ground cover species. And so they would identify the area that had been mitigated or enhanced for, for this purpose. And then they would have to tabulate and document how much resource enhancement had done in an area calculation. So one acre, 1.5 acres, whatever it is. And then they would have to create a, some kind of record that would document how much advanced mitigation had been done. And then they would come, that applicant would then come through at a later date, propose some development that would be able to meet standards but would require a site enhancement option. And they would say, okay, well, we need to do half an acre of site enhancement. We've got an acre and a half of advanced mitigation down here, so we're going to draw down our stock of advanced mitigation. But it would have to be explicitly spelled out in the approval process for that, that site enhancement. The, the purpose of the site enhancement was for advanced mitigation. And Bureau of Environmental Services has already identified a couple of candidate sites. They haven't moved forward with that process yet, but we're kind of working with them in the permitting and development department to work out the nuts and bolts of that process. But what we're creating is kind of a framework. So once that environmental review has been completed, they'll have something that they can draw down and, and a process by which they can do that.
Okay, and there wasn't any feedback from the, from BES or concern about just the sequencing of that and kind of building up your bank to be able to draw it down later for future projects?
I, I think BES is pretty excited about the opportunity to do this because currently I think that they, they feel like environmental review is a, is a roadblock in the approval process. And so anything that they can do to, to move the, the final design and development of the, of the actual structures down the road, to move that process along will reduce their costs and staff time. So they're devoting considerable staff time right now to identifying mitigation sites and coming up with a process for getting that done in advance so that they can relieve the engineers that are doing the actual pump station replacement down the road from the, the resource enhancement things that are not really in the wheelhouse.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And I want to pause. Other questions so that we can move into and quickly probably out of testimony? We didn't have any testimony signed up. I'm curious, is there any in the room?
Chair Ralph, we're here in the room, and we don't see anybody who is interested in providing testimony at this time.
Thank you, Director Deefender. Okay, then we shall let us close both oral and written testimony as of now. Thanks to everyone. And, and with that, other, going into full-on discussion, other questions, thoughts, comments?
Commissioner Brannon. Just in response to your question, I had a project with off-site mitigation for an outfall in the Willamette River, and it was really challenging. Back when I worked with the city of Portland, it took us like three to four months to get approval for off-site mitigation. And it ended up being like a really wonderful pilot project because we were told, yeah, you have to plant plants in a riprap zone next to the Willamette River. There's no way those plants would have survived. And so we were able to actually take care of some off-site mitigation, I think by one of our pollution, by the Pollution Control Center. And we hired in some co-bid small firms to do those plantings. So it met like two of the, the guidelines, and it was kind of a unique project. It did take us a long time to even get there. And then we ended up missing the in-water work window because all that off-site mitigation and other things were not taken care of. So it extended the time and the cost and everything on that project. So I'm imagining with larger-scale projects like pump stations and such, this is something that would ease that. And there was a list. Many of the staff are no longer there due to some budget constraints, as far as I know. So there's not as much capacity to even like address a lot of those projects and that work. So if this is a way to ease that and get pump stations filling at capacity, and I am, I will say disclosure, I, I work on pump stations, not as a designer or project manager for them anymore, but I know them fairly well in the process.
Thank you. Commissioner Spivak.
Thank you. I'm interested in, it's already in the codes, but the P-Bot's ability to remove trees. It seems they can remove trees within the right-of-way and within 10 feet of the edge of the improvements, unless it's in a floodplain. Is that any, of any size? Is that a, a lower threshold than like BES would face near a pump station or Parks would face? And if so, is that sort of making it? It's, it's a preference for taking out trees near roads, it seems like, as opposed to for other stuff of infrastructure that was the impetus for the project. Did you see any kind of a balancing thing there?
Yeah, that's, so there are, I, I, you, you are definitely correct. There are no requirements for tree replacement. I think that the reason for that was because typically when you're developing right-of-way, there really is no onsite area to do replanting, which is a similar situation to what we faced with the pump stations. But I think.
But BES has to do it off-site, P-Bot doesn't.
Yeah.
Correct?
No, that's, that's totally correct. And yeah, so that's, that is a disparity between the standards for, for right-of-way and for BES.
Commissioner Knowles?
A generic question. When you're doing code changes like this, is there some sort of a feedback mechanism with the current planning staff? Both to ask what sort of problems are you running into and to ask, is this, can you implement these new code standards?
There is, yeah. So most of the things that we're proposing now have come directly from partner bureaus in our communications with them. And we meet our, our river and environmental planning team at BPS. We have a monthly standing meeting with our counterparts in the permitting and development department, that, the, the people that do environmental reviews and environmental plan checks to discuss what, what pitfalls and issues they experience with implementing the code. So we're, we're working kind of hand in glove with them to try to, and, and they also provide feedback on our drafts and whatnot, but we, we have a pretty high level of engagement with them.
On the missile, this is Patricia Brannon. On the miscellaneous amendments where you're removing a public comment that you said was redundant, where in that process would that typically occur? And why would it be considered redundant? Because typically, I kind of think like additional public engagement isn't a bad thing because many people don't know these projects come out the first time. And then once it gets a certain amount of media attention, then it's like you get the engagement that probably should have happened if more people knew about it. So where in that step is the redundant process? And why is it negative? And then second part of that, who proposed it? Because I might think of a certain bureau who might have not wanted that in regard to their filtration plant.
So to compare and contrast the general public comment section and the one that's specific to the E-zones, the one that's general applies to any development that's over 10,000 square feet in size. So, and, and it applies regardless of the approval process. So whether you go through standards or through discretionary review process, you need to post the site, you need to do notification online. If it's a discretionary review process, then you provide for public comment during that review process, and information is provided as to how to submit that testimony. The one that applies to the E-zones is unique because it applies to any, any scale of development. So whether it's a 10-square-foot outfall or whether it's a 10,000-square-foot development, which would trigger the normal public comment period, it will apply with the E-zones. And the E-zone public comment period only applies when the proposal meets the discretion, the non-discretionary standards, the, the clear and objective standards. So if you have to go through environmental review, you don't even trigger this requirement. It's only if you, if you meet the, the non-discretionary standards, which is weird because it's a non-discretionary approval process. So all, all it goes through is a plan check. The staff say, yep, you meet the standards, stamp and move it on. So there's really no purpose for the, the public comment there. I, I think the way that's written is assuming that the staff are going to make a mistake when implementing the standards, and somehow the, the public's going to come in and say like, oh, no, that setback wasn't met or something like that. And, but in practice, in our communication with the permitting and development people, they said that they know of no instance where public comment actually has been submitted through this process. So it seems like it's just adding unnecessary delay, and it's not actually resulting in any meaningful public engagement.
That's good, good feedback, dear.
Chair Ralph.
And thank you, thank you, Vice Chair Thompson, for taking over discuss, stack during discussion because I'm a lot of miles away. Daniel, you had mentioned related to the re-vegetation fee. You were kind enough a couple of weeks ago in officers to share, you know, in recent past, we've seen that, that some tree removal fees that, that has gone to PP&amp;D. And this will go into urban forestry as, under their managing fee process. So I'm curious, why urban forestry and not into PP&amp;D? Could you just share the reasoning there? Thank you.
Yeah, so they have a staff in the Parks Bureau. I think it's under urban forestry. I need to double-check on that. But, but in our notes, it says it's in the urban forestry. And so they have, it's a different group, though, that's doing more natural area management. They're not involved in regulating tree removal, permitting, They're not involved in regulating tree removal, permitting, any of that kind of stuff. Their work is really going out there and planting trees out in various places around Portland. So there is a group that has the capacity to implement and manage those funds. The fee would be collected by the PP&amp;D. So their staff, it would be at the time of coming in for your environmental plan check, when you're getting your permits and your zoning, your zoning permit, you would pay the fee at that time. And they would collect the fee, but then it would go into a pool that then could be administered by staff at parks in the urban forestry division that have the capacity to do that, the planting.
I, I, I'm Commissioner Spivak for the record. I had a follow-up on that one. It seems like things are still moving around in our bureaucracy at the city. I wonder if there's a way of writing this code without naming a bureau? Or is it important to say this bureau gets the money versus like the executive branch gets, I mean, see what I mean?
Yeah.
I don't know who's going to be running this particular chief programs, you know, three years from now. And I just wonder whether there's a way to more generalize this.
I might just jump in, Daniel, and please help me if you, if you need to correct me for anything. Patricia Diefenreifer for the record. I think it's important for purposes of administering funds and accountability that it's clear who's, who's in charge of implementing, you know, the program and the funding that goes with that. I mean, I think one of the things you're commenting on is that, for example, there's been a discussion in the city about the natural areas administration and which, which department actually ultimately will do that. We, let us think about that and when we have the work session, maybe we can come back with some thoughts. I mean, just off the top, I'm thinking about maybe it can say Parks and Recreation or, you know, whichever entity is, is managing natural areas in the future or some, something along those lines. So maybe we could think about that. But I do think it's important that there is clear understanding of who those funds are being managed by. And Daniel, please feel free to jump in if you have any other thoughts on that.
Yeah, I would just echo that in that because there has been such difficulty in Bureau of Environmental Services previously in tracking the funding, making sure that's being spent. And typically we stipulate that the money needs to be spent in the same watershed from which it comes from. So really having that chain of accountability of who's going to be managing those funds and making sure that that is actually being spent in the way that's envisioned, I think is important. But, but I think your point is well taken and the city is definitely in flux right now. So we need to make sure that the, who we're assigning that responsibility to is going to be there in the long run.
And I really, I probably should walk back that comment because I'm thinking about it. We fund all sorts of bureaus through the zoning code. We summon the Housing Bureau to prosper Portland. I think almost every bureau gets a cut out of the Title 33 at this point, which I'm not thrilled with, but it is pretty prevalent. So I guess I'm okay with sending some money to a bureau and naming it.
Yes. To that end, I just want to note, especially with new commissioners, that we are part of our, during our deliberations, after our recommendation to city council, after we voted, one thing that we discuss is what should go into a transmittal letter. So for example, if we have a strong feeling about, you know, who, which bureau or which department should have, should have authority over a specific aspect of a code project, that is something that, you know, that we can share in our transmittal letter that will, will accompany our vote to city council. So, so during our deliberations, that's something to be keeping in mind. What, what are the aspects of, of our conversations that you feel strongly about, that you think that we should be highlighting or advocating for specifically so that, so that we can transmit that in our, in our letter to council? Thank you.
And Chair Ralph, I'm not seeing any other hands or comments here. Anyone else?
Thank you, Vice Chair Thompson.
Okay. Well, Daniel, Director Diefenreifer, thank you so much for, for bringing us through the Public Infrastructure Environmental Code Project to date. We'll continue this agenda item to our August 12th Planning Commission meeting for a work session. And from that, thank you and let us go seven minutes before anticipated to the waterfront study. This is an informational presentation and I would invite Ryan Singer, who's our principal planner at Bureau of Planning and Sustainability, to join us.
Chair Ralph, Patricia Diefenreifer, just to clarify, just, I think you mentioned continuing this item. I just want to make sure that it's clear that, as you noted earlier, the oral and written testimony is closed for this item and that the next meeting will be a work session for-
Correct, but the item itself is continued. But the item itself is continued.
Yes, okay, thank you.
Yes.
Good evening. I'm Ryan Singer. I'm the principal planner for Long Range Planning and Urban Design at BPS. And today I'm going to talk about our Central City Waterfront Urban Design Study. This is a study that we've developed a scope for a consultant for. It's Meyer Reed. They have already started work and so we're just sharing out with you the contents of the scope. This study isn't happening in a vacuum. We're actually responding in some ways to a lot of energy and ideas that are already happening in the city over the past nine months, really. The City of Possibility exhibit and the events surrounding that that happened over the winter and early spring. And then also following up with that with the City of Possibility and their Central Waterfront Design Sherret and the City Club and Architectural Heritage Foundation, Central City Sherret, really started to put some pen to paper around some of these ideas. The Portland Parks and Recreation has pursued and received a Metro 2040 grant for reimagining the Tom McCall Waterfront Park Bowl, which really starts to put some, some funding around towards some design idea that's very exciting. And then also the U of O has an architectural design studio, which over the course of the fall will be contributing ideas and energy going forward. And so out of some of this, these, these past efforts, some big ideas have emerged and a lot of big ideas. We're just, we're just a few of them that caught our eye was identifying east-west streets that we have downtown Portland has a lot of east-west streets. They're carrying traffic or not in some cases. And so thinking about how to prioritize them for public investment and then also private investment of what, what's happening, you know, in the buildings along those streets as well. Another idea was reconceptualizing Waterfront Park. And this can take a lot of different forms. Right now it is a linear park, but so some ideas are maybe it doesn't behave so much like a linear park rather than a series of interconnected parks that all have different characters and do different things. Another big idea was rethinking Nato Parkway. It really does, in many cases, act like a barrier between the central city and the waterfront. And so it could be something else. It could be closed down or it could be narrowed or it could be carrying transit. So a lot of these ideas are out there and being discussed. Housing downtown particularly to increase the residential base, this has many benefits, not least of which that it advances our citywide housing goals, but it also begins to change the character of parts of downtown where, whereas today maybe it gets very quiet after five o'clock and then instead if you had residential down there, it would be a little more lively throughout, throughout the day. It also just brings more eyes to the street and, and changes, changes the character and the needs and things that serve residential uses are different. And then creating distinct neighborhoods, this is a big idea that's been talked about. And in this case, you know, many of our downtown neighborhoods do have distinct neighborhood characters, but some of them may need to be different in the future. They may need to be reimagined, they may need to be more residential or maybe they need to be, leverage certain, say nightlife that is already there. So these are some big ideas. And then drilling down more to these and concepts and themes from these other efforts is really connecting the open space and energy that's in the upland community. So the West End and the park blocks, despite what you might have read in the papers, have a lot of things going on on them. There's residences there, there are restaurants and events and other things happening in other parts of downtown and really thinking about how we connect that down to the waterfront. Rethinking those select corridors, this is again the east-west streets. How do we think about those? How do we start to select them? How do we develop themes around those corridors and what they can be in the future? And then part of that, we think, is bringing the waterfront into the city. How do you think about green spaces coming up more into the urban fabric? And then bringing the city to the waterfront? How do you think about having more activity down onto the waterfront itself? And then reinforcing and defining those neighborhood characters. And as you can see in this, this diagram from the City of Possibility Sherret, the, you know, there is four distinct areas. You could probably drill down and come up with more or you could zoom out and change the geography of these altogether. But these were just one way of looking at the defined characters along our central city waterfront. And then I'm going to talk also about the Portland's Park and Recreation, their Metro 2040 grant. As I said before, this is really a major sort of opportunity along the waterfront, not least of which is because the bowl represents one of the few places in Central City where you can get down to the water, you can go and touch the Willamette. And so, you know, Metro, Portland Parks and Recreation hopes to have an international design competition to create a new vision for the bowl, which they hope to come out with 30% development drawings. And, and so they have some funding to do that and they will be beginning that work in the fall of 2025. And they're partnering with, with organizations that have an interest in accessing the water and, and thinking about the waterfront. We think this is again a pretty exciting opportunity and, you know, we're going to be working with them. Part of this, Portland or Parks is already thinking about how they could implement any vision that comes out of that. And as part of that, they're looking at capital funding that would, would need to have, in order to get it, would need to have housing and economic development planning sort of attached to it and supporting it. So they're talking to us, to Prosper and to other bureaus about how they can, how we can best support them in realizing whatever vision comes out of this, this grant and design competition. So BPS's study, we're really focusing on the urban fabric around the waterfront, although we're not exclusive to that. And it's roughly defined, you know, Steel Bridge and Gleason to the north, down to the Markham Bridge to the south, the park blocks and their prolongations to the west and then over across the river to Southeast Grand Street in the east. And, you know, we have a focus on the area roughly three blocks from the waterfront. We're not exclusive to that, but, but we do want to put some special effort into that. And, you know, this, this area has a lot of things going on in and around it. The OMSI master plan is going on. The Lloyd District and Albina Planning is going on just to the north, the Portland Diamond Project to the south. And so we're really, you know, we've charged our consultant to, you know, they have their study area, but then think about how you connect and, and think about the areas just right outside of that. And then within the area, you know, light rail lines, the Green Loop is also ongoing planning effort in the area. And then Broadway Corridor and other, other things going on. So our scope has an approach that we're looking at key corridors, which to focus those streetscape improvements and activation and future developments. Those are primarily east-west, but we definitely included north-south, particularly Nato Parkway was called out in our scope. We also have a focus on nodes of activity and this can be anything that brings people out. It can be retail and space, active housing, if there is that, and stuff that draws visitors or generates pedestrian activity. And then we've asked them to identify areas of opportunity and we're, again, pretty broad here, publicly owned, privately owned property, parks, streets, anything that could leverage the proximity to a node of activity or other asset that we can use to enhance our connection to the waterfront. And so, you know, one of the themes that we're really interested in drilling down further on is this idea of creating these distinct neighborhoods, you know, opportunities around the Morrison Bridgehead ramps. You know, a big idea there was to, you know, could we remove those ramps and what kind of opportunities for housing or other development would be able to be achieved there? And can you use that to then stretch that activity out to the Esplanon Edge? The Hawthorne Street, you know, rethinking the area around the bowl and, and sort of the Hawthorne Bridge approach. Right now it's civic institution hub. It's a little sleepy. And so if you have activity and things happening in the bowl, how do you sort of bring that up into the, into the upland community? And then we have, you know, the historic Ankeny area, Old Town. And there's, you know, a lot of nightlife and other things happening there. And that section of the park actually does have quite a bit of character in terms of the, the, you know, blossoming, the cherry blossoms. And then last but not, not least, you know, the other end of it, Harbor Flats, you know, we're asking things like reduction of Nato Parkway in terms of its footprint or Harbor Drive that act as barriers and could you unlock housing infill development and, and sort of make those connections a little less, less hard to make, actually? So what, do the urban design strategies, what are they, what's going to come out of this? I don't even want to specify anything because we really want to give our consultants sort of some free rein here to suggest things. But I will say that we, we sort of said to them that we want stuff that ranges in implement, you know, how easy it is to implement, things that we could put out some planters and put down some paint, it could happen next spring. And then, you know, could you then build on it? Could then it, you know, five years, could we put in some curbs and make it more permanent or, and then program it or, and then, you know, 10 years and is there an opportunity to do development around an area and really start to activate it? And so thinking around a spectrum of, of interventions. And so, you know, I threw up a bunch of precedent images from all over the, all over the place as, you know, things that are both, you know, it's like someone put up some pretty lights, I think this is actually from Los Angeles, that, you know, are sort of interesting and make space interesting at night to, you know, much more permanent sort of things, building parks and get downs into the, into, into the water. So our timeline for this is rather quick. We are, our consultants are actually working on this right now, doing some design analysis and they're going to be working on some concepts. Then in August, September, we hope to do a little round of outreach and public conversation, go to the Design Commission, the AI Design Panel, Urban Design Panel, have an open house, do some listening sessions along with Parks, which will also be doing some listening sessions in relation to their, their outreach. So we're working hand in glove with our, with our partners at Parks. And then in October through December, you know, prioritize some of these ideas, refine those concepts and develop some visuals that we can sort of use to communicate the ideas. And, and then in January, have an open house to share those final concepts and visuals and hopefully continue and advance this public conversation that the city's been having around the, the central city waterfront. I will also share that the Parks Department has a much more detailed project timeline. And as part of this, you'll see that BPS has a urban design strategies box that we are, that we're going to then feed into their design brief for their project. So, you know, some of the ideas and concepts that we're developing along with others will really go into informing what goes out for the, as, you know, sort of a design concepts and, and context for the folks who are responding to the design competition. So it really- So it really has the potential to inform the way the bowl, people are thinking about the bowl and the waterfront in general. And I'm going to stop there. Patricia, did you have any more? Not, okay.
I will just add one quick thing, Patricia DeFender, for the record. I mean, I think what we wanted to do here is share with you that we're recognizing that there's so much interest and energy around the waterfront and how we think about the waterfront of the future. And this study is really meant to be a building block to inform other efforts. So this is kind of the role that BPS is playing under Ryan with the design studio is to facilitate this kind of conversation, which involves both public input. And I don't know if you noticed in the timeline there, there's also opportunities to do multi-bureau sherrets so that we really crowdsourc all of our best thinking about what are some possibilities for the future. And so it's really meant to, this is not a plan in and of itself, but it's really a study that's meant to inform a lot of different efforts, including advancing parks and recreations, you know, both their visual, sorry, their competition for the bowl, but also future funding that they will be seeking to implement some of these ideas. So we want to make sure that there's kind of like a package of things that we can demonstrate that is supportive of activation of the park in the future. And I think that's mainly what we wanted to share, is that this really is meant to inform a lot of different efforts. And another effort that this could inform is the TIF district action planning that is going to be going on as well. So this is truly a partnership among all the different bureaus. We're all working, we got a lot of input from them to develop this scope, and the idea is that it's really meant to support a lot of different efforts that the different bureaus are all undertaking to help revitalize the central city.
I've got a question, David Knowles. So these kinds of visioning projects need champions outside of the public realm, outside of bureaus. So it's great that the Parks Department, its bureau is engaged. Who are the champions for this that you see? And you may not know them yet. But what's the process for creating advocates and champions? And who will be engaged from the community?
Well, I think we can start by saying, this actually kind of was generated from external parties who are interested, design community, people who have been active in central city development for a long time. So it really does have, I think it has champions already, and there are a lot of folks out there trying to make those connections and demonstrate how things can be very different in the future. And so I think part of our work in helping to raise awareness about this is to do things like we're doing here, which is this presentation. We also expect that we'll have opportunities to present to different leadership and to potentially to council committees in the future. So we're really just trying to take whatever opportunities. I think the staff came together, multiple bureaus, and briefed the Design Commission on this. Similarly, kind of talked about what's happening with the bowl design and also the work that we're doing. So these are all different ways in which we can start to raise awareness about what's possible and to have it be informed different processes.
I guess I'd just share that my experience is that you need to be thinking about implementation from day one. Otherwise, it just is another plan on a shelf, so that's all.
I'll just offer one other thought, just in response to that, Commissioner Knowles, which is that, as we've mentioned, we understand Parks and Recreation is going to be seeking funding, capital funding, ultimately to be able to build whatever design comes from the visioning process. And so we also understand that there's some funding sources through Metro, but they do have criteria for ensuring, for example, that the city is taking steps to activate and ensure the future success of the park. So they're really interested in what we're doing to encourage housing in the downtown, how we're doing economic development in downtown. So this is essentially, we're hoping that this will support those future applications and really facilitate implementation in the future.
Commissioner Thompson, a couple of the groups that have been advocating for this for a long time are the Human Access Fund and the Portland Waterfront Pavilion Group, I think maybe for the better part of 15 years. And a couple of months ago, when the announcement came about the PPNR grant, it was like, oh, this is great, maybe it'll move forward. And also, what about the context, like the bigger picture? And how is that being considered as part of this pretty focused study that's part of the design competition? And I just really wanted to commend staff for finding a way to be nimble and to show up and be part of that process because I don't think it was on the work plan radar that I saw like many months ago. And I know that everybody is really busy and that we're trying to do what we can with limited budget. So thank you for reacting and for being able to hold a conversation that can provide some of that big picture thinking and awareness to inform the competition. I think it will be better as a result of that. And I hope that this can continue to build momentum. I'm curious to get thoughts on what the Planning Commission could do to try to increase awareness or drop in the bucket of generating support for it. I mean, this is referred to as a study, which is, sounds appropriate. It's not like a master plan. It's not the comprehensive guide. It seems like it's intended to identify some really key opportunities that we don't lose sight of with all these other initiatives. But probably we should do that bigger plan at some point. And just curious, like the likelihood of that. And then one other minor question. Is there a cost parameter that is informing Mayor Reed's work and what they are and are not looking at? And like how aspirational or visionary they can be versus the sorts of more modest interventions?
We did not give them a, like, don't propose really expensive stuff. We just said, like, give us a range, is what we wanted to get. But we do, to many, to some of the point is, we did have things we really want them to look at, like opportunity sites where things like TIF funding could be informed by this study. So if there's a site where you could leverage, sort of more bang for your buck in terms of TIF funding, was one of the discussions we've had.
I'll just simply add that, yeah, we really ask them to look at a wide range, things that could be done with relatively little expense and in the shorter term, and then longer term things and everything in between. So hopefully that will give us, you know, things, again, that we can be more tactical and do in the shorter term, and also work towards some longer term projects that will require more coordination and more funding.
Just looking for, this is Drisha Brennan. How was this area prioritized over other parts of the city? I mean, just curious, I'm missing the background, sorry.
Sorry, maybe we jumped into it without telling the overarching objective, which was, this is all about waterfront activation. So this is really about thinking about the, we all know the central city is going through sort of a difficult time. There's obviously, the way, the changes in the way that people are working. We have retail vacancy, we have office vacancy. We have, we have a housing shortage, and we have a need for housing. And so really trying to think about how do we position downtown and central city in the future to become activated in ways that are maybe different than it was in the past. But really, the goal has been to think about, how do we do waterfront activation? But then how do we build the central city around it in such a way that it supports the success of a new waterfront park? Because we have the park today, but it's not necessarily, there aren't a lot of people there all the time, and it could certainly, you know, there could be things happening there that create more of a draw, both a regional draw, a draw throughout the city, and certainly, if there were more people living in central city, then there would be a built-in audience for the park, so to speak.
Lucas Pollock, for the record. I just kind of have a more minor question, and it might be a little too early on to give a definitive answer. I was just kind of curious whether vendors, like permitted vendors within the waterfront park are in the conversation for activation and drawing in visitors to the area? Or if it's just a little too early on to say?
Not with our proposal, but I know there is a conversation with the vendors in the park. I think PPNR has been talking to them, both part of their proposal. And then I know Prosper has also had conversations with how the park, it's also the festivals that happen in the park is another conversation I know Prosper's been having with them.
Thank you.
Eli Speevak, for the record. I mean, I'm thrilled the Bureau's doing this project. I mean, I think that the most important thing to revitalize Central City is connecting to the river, on both sides of the river. So it was nice to see your maps show on both sides, even though I know your study might not. I was getting a little worried, all the focus on the bowl, because the bowl is just a small part of it. And if the focus, if the bowl absorbs all of our attention, then, like, history here, you guys probably all know it, but we built Harbor Drive in the '40s. We removed it in the '70s. There was never a plan for it to be a grassy, flat zone for 50 years, and that's what it's been. I mean, in terms of vendors, that's a great point, Luke. Like, there aren't very many vendors downtown, almost ever. It's illegal by the overlay, the OS is OS-zoned. Hopefully, as part of this project, we're going to change something, but we can do an OS zone because you can't activate a riverfront like we need to with the current rules in place. So I hope that at least comes back to us. And it's inspirational seeing other cities. I mean, Vancouver, both Anguars, Washington and B.C., both have some rockin' waterfronts. Seattle's just done great jobs with theirs. Chicago, I mean, you don't have to go very far to get a lot of inspiration. And just to see how awesome our park system is in the city and to see an area, our central city, it's flat. And when there's activation there, half the time, there's a fence around it. I mean, you have to pay to get in, right? So I really hope that the city, if a city's going to go big on something, I'm glad the big thing is part of it, then this is what we should go big on. So, I'm great, it's great. And I hope it does come back because we need commerce. I mean, people will go there to sightsee, but people are going to go there also to buy things, to get excited, to rent things, things like that.
I believe the chair has her hand up.
Chair Ralph, sorry, there, Chair Ralph, go ahead.
Thank you. I appreciate all of the comments that folks have made. And I understand that, like, I appreciate Commissioner Speevak saying, like, access to the river is important on both sides. And it absolutely is, and I appreciate that. I also know, as we all know, that COVID has left a long tail of the need for revitalization in the central city. I also, I don't know if this is any part of where Commissioner Brennan was going, but I just, what comes up for me is what often comes up when we are talking about the central city and revitalization and investments in it. And that is that it cannot come, as someone who grew up in East Portland and has lived there the majority of their life, that has seen just year-over-year disinvestment. And we have more empty lots, more high-crash corridors than other districts, that it's just really important that we keep in mind that revitalization efforts in the central city do not come at the detriment of meaningful, historically unrealized investments in the rest of the city, and very specifically, East Portland. And I hear that the Central City TIF district as an opportunity that this tees up some of that visioning, and I appreciate that. And I appreciate that, you know, East Portland TIF is a different conversation, but I just, I can't let this conversation end without saying that. Thank you. Sorry if I just killed the room.
Yeah, I'm just looking around, any other comments? Yeah, Commissioner Alvarado.
Yes, I think my mic's on. Yeah, I love the idea of facing. I think what the pandemic brought in a lot of cities is some exploration and thinking about some short-term options that can be very easily removed if they don't work. But they can be used as test sites for more permanent installations and investments. So I really like that that's how the city of Portland's thinking about this.
Chair Ralph, not seeing any other hands.
Thank you so much, Vice Chair Thompson. Okay, Ryan Singer, thank you so much for your presentation on the waterfront study. Do you need a few minutes, or do other folks need a few minutes before we go into our last, which is our last agenda item, which is inner east side infrastructure study?
Propose we take a quick two minutes? Are folks okay with that? Three minutes even? Should we be generous? Okay, let's reconvene by 6:45.
Beautiful, thank you so much.
God, it's a bit chilly in here.
Yeah.
Forgot to, I'm not very, because there's things in here.
No, no way.
How's it going?
Good, good.
Wonderful, thank you. That was the first time I saw the waterfront work. That's really exciting. Yeah, yeah.
The Zoom screen with Chair Ralph isn't showing up, so are you there, Chair Ralph? Yay, all right, okay, we have everyone back with us.
Okay, I can start on this. So, let's get my presentation up, you know, it takes a minute. This is the inner east side infrastructure assessment, which has been about a year and a half effort with our partner bureaus at PBOT, the Bureau of Environmental Services, and the Portland Water Bureau. And it's also part of a sort of ongoing coordination that we've been doing with our infrastructure bureaus to try to better align our long-range planning for land use, which is what BPS does, with the long-range planning for the infrastructure bureaus, and really sort of understanding how all of them work, and they all work very different, and along, and sort of better coordinating with them. But this infrastructure assessment is funded by a grant from DLCD, and like I said, it's been going on for about a year and a half. Ludwig Salzman, who's here in the audience, was the project manager for most of this. And so we'll, we'll jump right into it, talk a little bit about the inner east side study area boundary. And this is, you know, this sort of comes out of many different sort of conversations. The Portland Neighbors Welcome had identified an area that's roughly this. It also aligns with our inner ring area in the comprehensive plan. But we looked at these boundaries and we said, oh, from, you know, the northern boundary of northeast Fremont down to Powell, and then west, the western boundary from the 7th and 12th avenues out to East 60th, including the Brooklyn neighborhood, sort of makes sense to us. And then we fiddled with them a little bit to include both sides of most of the streets, most of the major corridors, and then also carved out some areas that are with, outside of the combined stormwater sewer system of BES. So for ease of analysis for BES, they wanted us to only have one sewer system for them to look at. So this was the study area that we're talking about when we talk about the inner east side. So the study objectives were to look at increasing mixed-use, mixed-multi-unit residential development in this closer-in, inner-ring neighborhood. Most of the inner east side is zoned for single-family right now, and so we would want, we wanted to evaluate what would happen if we increased zoning capacity with, to the existing infrastructure, and how it would accommodate greater housing capacity. And then, as part of that, assess those system constraints and identify some of the system improvements that may be necessary in the future. And it serves really as a technical analysis to form future land use planning for, you know, changes to the zoning. What I'm going to show you is not a, is not a land use plan, and is not a zoning plan, so I just want to, I'll say that several times. But, so, the comprehensive plan, as I said, identifies these inner-ring districts as areas where multiple mixed-use corridors sort of converge, and that residents, you know, live within frequent, you know, within easy access to frequent transit service and neighborhood businesses. It's also quite easy to get to the central city from these inner-ring neighborhoods. And the comprehensive plan has policies around expanding the range of housing and employment opportunities in these areas, and specifically along those corridors, so guiding the growth of corridors to transition from sort of lower scale to mid-rise as it gets closer to the central city. Another sort of piece of context is the infill housing regulations of the Residential Infill Project, which expanded those opportunities for middle housing into areas for, that are historically been zoned for single dwellings. And, you know, it's two years of data, we haven't had these regulations in place for that long, but what we're finding is that these, this type of housing works best in areas with a proper balance of land use costs, or land costs, and rents and sales prices. So if it's too expensive, the land costs, then it's hard. And if you're not able to get enough rent or sales price, then that also makes it hard. What we found is much of the inner east side has higher land costs, and that makes it difficult to develop middle housing. The map on the, on the screen there shows where, you know, the housing, middle housing type have been built, and it sort of rings around this, the inner east side here. And so that suggests that if we want to have additional housing development in this inner-ring neighborhood, we'd have to have a different approach to the zoning here.
Just a quick question. Does middle housing, that doesn't include ADUs here, does it?
I believe that it is the...
Somebody behind you is, hello, hi there.
Does not, yeah. Ludwig says no, so yes, it's duplexes through the fourplex. This is also an area that has, it's a low-carbon neighborhood, so this is lower vehicle miles traveled per capita than other parts of the city here on the inner east side. And this is a major goal to have, to lower vehicle miles traveled for the state of Oregon, and for the region, and for our Transportation Bureau. If you, when we talk about the TSP, they will talk about VMT, lowering VMT a lot. And by increasing opportunities for people to live in the areas where there's already lower vehicle miles traveled, you could reduce that overall for the whole city. So the process for, that we took while, for undergoing this effort, you know, I already talked to you a little bit about the study boundary definition, so we worked with our, you know, infrastructure bureaus to refine the boundary definition. We did some conceptual growth scenarios, that then we sat down with our infrastructure bureaus and looked at their existing system conditions, and sort of, they had, we had sort of a green light, yellow light, red light kind of thing, like, what are the areas where you think growth could occur very easy? What are the areas where, oh, there might be some caution needed, and then other areas where there, you may have, they had serious concerns or higher risks for certain things? And we had a work session where we sat down, everybody laid out their maps, and they talked, and we had some really good conversations about these existing conditions. From that, we did some sub-area boundary refinements for study purposes, and reran these conceptual growth scenarios. And then the BES, PBOT, and Water Bureau did some in-depth, more in-depth analysis, looking at those growth scenarios, and sort of like, what would happen in the future based on these growth scenarios? And then we have a final report, which hopefully should be out within the next month, that sort of lays out all of that. The contents of this presentation is the sort of Cliff Notes version of that report, though. For our conceptual growth scenario approach, I'll share that, this with you, we had sort of three tiers of development types that we considered. And in tier one is our, you know, higher intensity, higher density, commercial mixed-use zone, seven stories, it could be office, it could be housing, five-to-one floor area ratio, which is just basically how much building, square footage that can go on the lot. And then in tier two, we did two, a low and a high, and we have, there we had a RM4, which, you know, typically results in 11-story buildings, and then the RM3, which typically results in seven-story buildings. Tier three, we looked, used the RM2, which typically results in about five-story buildings, the, you know, slightly lower floor area, three-to-one. And then in tier four, which we used on our historic districts, we did a high and a low, and we used the RM2, so the five-story, and then the lower RM1, which is four-story buildings, essentially. And so we used these tiers, and then we did a broad-brush approach on our, looking at our tier one on our one full block out from our designated corridors. And then for tier two, we did three full blocks out from our designated corridors, and as you can see, on the inner east side, there's high density of corridors very close together. And so typically, we just, you know, connected the areas of higher growth there. And then everywhere else, we did, you know, tier three, that's the sort of gold, golden rod color there. And then in our historic districts, we tested it with tier four, you know, what if you allowed small apartments, maybe if you allowed slightly larger apartments, what would happen? So, when we talk about conceptual growth scenarios, we want to just make sure that folks understand a little bit about what we're saying. So you have existing development, that's the sort of bar on the left there that says existing development. And then you have your development capacity, which is determined by the buildable lands inventory, and that is, you know, based on market economics and constraints, and they have a sort of typical building type for each of the zones that they sort of assume will happen. And that represents our supply. So if you, over the next 20 years, you have this, the buildable lands inventory says, this is how much you could expect under these zoning scenarios to be developed, or these are the lots that would likely be ripe for development. And then we have a growth projection that comes from the state and from the region, and what we do is we take that growth projection, and we sort of spread it around the city, and try to, you know, think about where it could go, where it would go best. And so that represents our demand. So we have a supply and a demand, so not all of our supply get of, you know, of sort of soft site will get used in the next 20 years. And then, but we have a amount that we think that will get allocated to certain areas. We also have, on the far right, a full build-out, so that's if you just took the maximum floor area ratio, and you sort of said every site gets built out. That's not realistic, but it is there, and a thing that sometimes gets discussed. So, to give some example of this, for our existing zoning, under existing zoning, our development capacity exists primarily along the corridors and along our larger, and on larger lots. So the blue, the darker blue is where the larger lots are, right? And this doesn't surprise us, this is, in the inner east side, we do have some higher density along the corridors, and then of course, larger lots can be expected to redevelop. This represents a capacity in the, under the buildable lands inventory, you know, sort of our market projection of 26,000 units. And then we, from, in that, we allocate from some of our projection for the next 20 years, about 18,000 units. The, just to put in context, the buildable lands inventory, so the capacity, that's only 13% of the total capacity in the city under the current sort of zoning conditions. And so, you know, this is a pretty large chunk of the city, and so it's a relatively small amount of the capacity is here. And then the utilization rate, so the amount of the, of units that we are allocating here is relatively high, 67% of our, of our expected capacity. And under sort of market conditions, you know, over 20 years, to see sort of 67% of the sort of, you know, available lots develop is cutting it pretty, you know, that's a lot, that's quite a bit of redevelopment that we have to occur. So, under a higher scenario, so if we, you know, did our broad-brush approach, and, you know, if we theoretically were to rezone all of this area, we have a much higher capacity of units, of course, 144,000 units in the, sort of, pop up on the buildable lands inventory. And that allows us to allocate more units, you know, expected growth to this area, sort of more 45%, which is, you know, maybe a better fit for an area with high amenities close to the central city. And it's, like I said, a pretty big area. And then we, you know, that represents also a 28% utilization rate of all of that capacity. And so that's a little more realistic, that's sort of in line with what we'd see in the rest of the city. Interesting sort of geography about where, you know, the southern part of this, of this area has sort of more, sort of is more sensitive to changes to the zoning, so that, you know, we don't want to read too much into sort of like, what lots pop and what don't on a lot-by-lot basis, but by and large, it seems like the southern area has the market conditions sort of start to balance out once you change the zoning. Yeah, Commissioners?
Thank you, Commissioner Spivak. Does it make anyone uncomfortable that the historic districts, lads and lotters have nothing happening in them in the high growth capacity?
We noted that as well. We noted that also outside of the historic districts also, you know, either don't see enough, high enough rents, or their property values are also too high to do that, but we noted that.
But I'm guessing that if the, I'm guessing that the redevelopment has to do with the delta between values and what's allowed?
Yes.
So if from the outset, you set the redevelopment opportunity in historic districts to be at the lowest end, then that would make it least likely for them to be developed, is that right?
Yeah, we went, we went up to five stories in the historic districts.
Oh?
Yeah.
Okay, I thought I saw RM1, RM2.
RM2, yeah, so was it, yeah, it was, RM2 can go up to five stories, yeah, it can go up to...
I've looked at some sites, RM1, RM2, and I...
Yeah, RM2, so 55 feet, it's, and a 3.1 FAR.
Okay, there'll be details in the thing.
Yeah, we, we noted that, and we tried to turn up the volume, you know, turn up the density a little bit to test that. And some, you'll see on the edges, some of the, some of those sites start to be sort of ripe for redevelopment. Yeah, yeah. We also ran a lower scenario, mainly to just see, you know, I mean, we were, we were turning up the intensity pretty high, you know, how, if we did sort of more modest upzoning, what would that do? It's still, you know, sort of, the pattern of, you know, so capacity doesn't change, you know, it's still 90,000 units of capacity increase, and then our, which allows us a pretty, you know, substantial allocation. And then our, which allows us a pretty, you know, substantial allocation from the rest of the city down to 25,000 units. It represented a 28% utilization rate. It's still 34% of the total capacity in the city, which is in line with, you know, it's a, like I said, it's a large area. So we took all of this, our, our capacity analysis, and we sat down with our partner bureaus. And they brought their existing conditions work and, you know, analyze and BES, particularly they analyze the risk and capacity of their existing infrastructure. Like I said, this is a combined stormwater steward system. So that's important to, to keep in mind. They told us that the sort of number of toilets flushing in a building is less important to the capacity of their system than the impervious surface in a stormwater sort of situation. They identified the Taggart D trunk line as a significant risk in the southern port, part of the study area. This is a, you know, the large trunk line, sort of that represents the basin, sort of where all the, all the liquid flows in that, in that basin. And it's, it's older and, and, you know, sort of has, might have capacity issues. We had some pretty in-depth discussions about stormwater management and whether, you know, how, how that gets sort of measured. We were trying to understand their model and how it interacts with our zoning. And, and then, you know, it was, it was a good discussion. PBOT, we talked to them also, and we had, you know, they, they expressed that this area has good connectivity. There are some bus wait time issues on major corridors. And then southeast Powell is a concern currently. You can sort of see it there in the, in the southern part, you know, the southern line there, a lot of red, red lines there. That, and they, they don't own that. And so that was sort of a concern for them. But this area by and large, like I said, has good connectivity. It has expected to have higher rates of transit, bike and walking modal shares in 2040. That was also a sort of a thing they noted. And then the water bureau, there were few water delivery system issues in this area. They do have some instances of older pipes. It's an older part of the city. But they, you know, sort of expressed to us that they felt that they're pretty confident in the replacement pipes that may be needed as sort of within their manageable scope of work over, over the course of the decades. So we did some subarea and growth scenario refinement, just for the, the study purpose here. And we did a sort of an inner ring subarea A, so looked at, at a growth projection or, you know, conceptual growth projection for that area. And then a sort of secondary, subarea A and B together. And so we did a growth capacity projection for that. We ran, we ran a high capacity analysis, which really doesn't, didn't increase, decrease much from our past high capacity analysis, which is, you know, 144 units, you know, in the conceptual zoning and an allocation of 40,000 units for the next 20 years. So we gave all of this, the, these projections to our partner bureaus. And they did in-depth analysis on their, their systems. PBOT, they did a sort of more traditional vehicle capacity analysis, looking at if you increase the density in subarea A. And then another run with if you did it in, in, in subarea A and B. The, in subarea A showed some areas of congestion, no surprises. Powell still sort of has some difficulties. But, you know, along some of the major corridors, you start to see some longer wait times. We, they were pretty generous with their time and did do some further analysis where they sort of essentially took, took trips that under the, the first, you know, scenario that they ran were car trips and said, well, what if these were, instead they were bus trips or, you know, bike, bike trips? And they showed that these areas are pretty responsive to, to changes in the modal split. So that was good news. So if you, so if you think about like, oh, well, if the modal split between cars and buses, you know, is, is higher in the future, that means that some of these congested areas may never actually sort of manifest in a future with higher, higher density zoning. If you do scenario in, in both A and B, the system becomes much more congested. And I'll just say that this wasn't a surprise to us. We kind of set out to break the system a little bit and said like, what, what would that look like if you did that? Areas along Powell Division and Cesar Chavez start to sort of show up as, as, as being more congested.
Vice Chair Thompson, maybe I missed it, but is there a legend? Or could you decode the colors? Like is green like a improvement over existing?
Green is within the acceptable parameters of sort of weight. And then it gets ranges, close to a, orange, orange is getting close. And it's, and then red is like you're over the, the wait time. It's like, sort of, you're essentially sitting in traffic, you know, during peak, during, during peak traffic time. Yeah, these were, I believe this was PM peak they were looking at.
And then the extent of this graphic just aligns to the actual boundaries of the study areas. But you can like get a little peek of the bridge there. And so like, what, what are the impacts?
Yeah, yeah. So that's, the, that's the thing about traffic is it doesn't stop at our study area boundary. And so it does look at, you know, I mean, the, the, yeah, there can, the system congestion sort of probably goes further down on, on, and, and out beyond what we're showing on this map a little bit, too. BES also ran an analysis, and this was sort of separate and apart from the Taggart D sort of known problem there. And this looked at, at small diameter pipes that would be overwhelmed, you know, say in a, in a, in a high rain event, under, under conceptual zoning was applied. And so in, if, if subarea A gets sort of, the, the land use changes are made there, the yellow areas start to see issues with small diameter pipes being overwhelmed. And then, you know, if you add in subarea B, then the, the red is the areas where you start to see, see issues happening with, with smaller diameter pipes. And so, you know, this shows that again, BES is, has a system. And so there are some areas, you know, beyond the, the subareas where you start to see issues if, outside of the subareas in, in higher density zoning scenarios. Water Bureau, they look at fire flow availability and they tested this in 12 locations under all of our, under all of our growth scenarios. And they really found no, no issues with their, their fire flow system here. So out of this, we have some findings and recommendations for area planning. And we also have some transportation recommendations, or at least some sort of a menu of, of things that could happen. And we have lower hanging fruit, as we're calling it. Sullivan's Gulch, Sandy, Mount Tabor area, the Kearns-Buckman area. And then the Brooklyn neighborhood, we think would, you know, we could look at land use changes in these areas. It would still entail coordinating with the transportation and BES on area planning. But these would be sort of smaller scale sort of efforts, looking at, you know, small, small diameter pipes and, and that kind of work. And then like something in, in range of a, like an in-motion plan for transportation. The Hawthorne to Powell area, this would entail more coordination and more significant transportation or infrastructure investment, particularly in relation to the Taggart D basin. And along corridors like Powell and Cesar Chavez to, to really do sort of a more coordinated approach to the planning and thinking about how we deliver the infrastructure investments necessary to accommodate growth. For the transportation planning, do you want to just give a flavor, I guess, of the types of, of things that, that would be necessary or, or desirable? Because some of these things are, are nice to have, and then some of them are, are need to have. You know, area planning, as I said, describes sort of in-motion plans. Other things that we'd want to consider or think about as we're going forward are public realm improvements. This area also would be a good candidate for parking management strategies, like parking management districts or shared parking strategies. You know, a bit larger corridor planning and project development, corridor plans for high crash corridors. A north-south bus service improvement was, was cited as, as one of the things that seems important. We have pretty good east-west connections on, on the buses and other transit, but the north-south is, is lacking in, in some of these areas. And then thinking about capital funding, you know, external grant, system development charges for, especially for those larger, larger scale efforts. And so that is what I have for my presentation. Happy to take questions, have a discussion.
Commissioner Knowles?
So did you have the same kind of conversation with TriMet as you had with the city infrastructure bureaus?
We haven't had that conversation with TriMet yet. We, we had conversation with our PBOT partners who work with TriMet. And so they, they flagged that that would be, I think, as part of an area plan that we would, we would need to start those conversations directly with TriMet.
I'm asking because the city doesn't control TriMet's resources. And it seems like an analysis where you're constraining the availability of resources would need to reflect transit availability and their ability to raise money to invest in new transit resources.
Yeah. Yeah, sure.
Commissioner Alvarado?
I have a question about just how well-coordinated systems are. Like, do we keep track of the age of roads and their expected improvements? And then are those coordinated with, you know, other systems? And how, you know, making sure that we, we have some form of planning for when those things are?
Yes, there, that is, that is the probably well more, more than a billion dollar question that gets asked of our infrastructure bureaus all the time. There is a group that is looking at asset management, a coordinated asset management strategy for the city. They do that as well as they can. So if PBOT does, is directly going to sort of, has to do some tear up the street, they, they talk to BES and to Water Bureau about that. But the issue is, is, and this is sort of much more inside baseball on, on this than this project really was, was at. But the, the different bureaus are funded so differently. So BES and Water Bureau rely on rate payers. And so they plan out their, their infrastructure investments based on the rate, sort of the rate payers that they have, and they plan it out very far in advance. And they're not able to be as nimble. Whereas PBOT is, they get a grant for something and then they go and they do it because they have a grant just for that thing. And they may not have a grant for the thing that Water Bureau needs them to do. So they do, they do coordinate as best they can, but there is a lot of sort of, because of the way they're funded, it is, is hard. And then, then we enter into the mix and Prosper and others enter in the mix and say, hey, we need to, you to do this thing for our thing to support the growth of the city. And then that also has, you know, another, another piece of the puzzle for them.
What level of storm, onsite stormwater management is required for the project, for the development scenarios that we are looking at?
So the scenario, development scenarios are pretty conservative. And we've had some conversations with BES about this. They tend to say that if it is an apartment building, that they have higher levels of impervious surface. And that the, and that yes, there is a stormwater manual that does require some level of that, but that there are ways to sort of, you can pay a fee in lieu. And so they, when they model this, they say an apartment building, you know, will have more impervious surface. And so there is some, I'd say, difference in opinion among us. Because we, we look at that and say, well, that's a parking lot today. And it, but they, they don't model it that way. So there is some, so there's some conservatism built into their, their model.
I, and I guess I was wondering about green roofs and just onsite stormwater management as alternatives to piped infrastructure. And if, if that was explored at all as part of the scenario?
It wasn't explored as part of the scenarios, but it is an ongoing conversation we're having with BES.
Can you hear me? Yeah. So Ludwig Salzman for the record, BES planning. To your question, for this, for this modeling effort, it was, like Ryan said, a very conservative approach. And so we currently assume impervious surface based on existing conditions and parking lots and surface parking and existing buildings. And so any new development would add impervious surface. So we, we have always, or in any scenario, we would add impervious surface. We never reduce it. However, the stormwater management manual requires onsite management. And any new development would have to meet that requirement, right? And, and the likelihood of that stormwater management, stormwater management manual implementation is somewhat unknown because of the, of the soil conditions and the building type, the building size on the site. And so we don't know how likely the stormwater management manual is implemented. And like Ryan mentioned, they can also, developers can also pay an in lieu fee instead of meeting the mitigation requirements onsite. And so for that reason, the Risk Assessment Division and BES modeled this on the more conservative side.
I see. Thank you. Commissioner, speak back?
I guess I'm following up on that question. I've, I've been developing in various places within the east side. And I've never had a site where you couldn't infiltrate onsite. I'm curious what other people's. I have run into sites in Washington County, in Ingressham, where I, you just, it's too much clay soils, you just can't do it. So I guess I'm curious, in this rectangle, whether there are places where someone couldn't infiltrate onsite. I haven't seen it myself. Have you even seen it?
No, I mean, we're building in the Hollywood district right now, and it's got great infiltration. And we got five dry wells.
It's all Missoula flood deposit out here.
Yeah.
And so you can get it out.
Yeah.
So that's a question, I guess, is if, if there's that. I mean, I know that in the region, there are areas where there's clay soils, you can't do it. But in this study area, I just wonder whether, because I would have run into the assumption that anywhere the stormwater, any new development, you'd be managing stormwater onsite. Existing development, you may or may not be, you know. Existing development, sometimes you are running into a storm drain. And so actually, the trend, the new development would decrease the demand on the stormwater system in this area, would be my assumption. But the modeling is not done that way. So I'm just checking that.
I think it's combined sanitary storm, right? So you'd have more sanitary demand with more.
Right, more sanitary demand, yes, yes, but.
And it's combined, I think, in this area.
Yeah, it's combined, yeah.
Okay.
But, I mean, BES was pretty, pretty clear with us that toilets, you know, I'm sure there's at some point that becomes an issue. But, but, but the, the stormwater is the thing that sort of, I think, keeps them up at night.
But why? Can I understand why? Maybe, maybe that's a follow-up for now, right now. But like, I'm, I'm trying to think why redevelopment would keep them updated on stormwater, because I don't understand it. I think, I think when redevelopment happens, in any case, I've ever done a project, stormwater, and maybe you can answer this question, stormwater has, stormwater going to the city has decreased because I've removed some paving that was maybe going to the city street or to some other place that was going to the city system. And I've replaced it with an onsite system where I have to manage all stormwater onsite, like 100% of projects. Like 100% of projects in this area are like that.
I think in BPS, we also have the same assumption that new development would be a net positive to the system. In this modeling exercise, however, this is currently the modeling that BES can do. We are switching internally to a different modeling system to better integrate these stormwater management mitigation effects that we currently don't really see. And one of the inputs to the modeling was infiltration rate. And it varies quite a lot, even in the study area. So they have samples, multiple thousand points of sampling throughout the study area to see the different infiltration rates. And so that was spread across the different modeling assumptions to make informed assumptions around what the infiltration rates are. And then this was combined with some experiences around development on small lots where onsite management might be challenging. And they have seen the stormwater management manual not being implemented. And so that's why the bureau decided to go rather on a conservative side in terms of assumptions.
And I don't want to put words in BES's mouth with you right here. But nobody, it didn't strike me that anyone was particularly concerned with the outcomes of the modeling that was done. Sort of, oh, yeah, there might need to be some level of planning and thinking about, you know, how to address some of these smaller diameter pipes to make sure that the system continued to work. But they didn't say, oh, my gosh, you broke the system, right? I mean, PBOT said that to us when we did, you know, both A and B. But that wasn't the response from BES.
And to add on to this, this is an older part of the city with this combined sewer system that already has a fair amount of risk in the system. So both in the larger trunk lines is a fair amount of risk that exists now. And some of the larger trunk lines are already capacity constrained. And so adding development here or adding impervious surface just adds more risk. But relative to the existing risk, the growth scenarios didn't necessarily break the system or made it much worse. It just tuned up the risk a bit. And the bureau was also able to put some dollar values on these added risks. So we have an understanding of magnitude of impact. But even under current development assumptions over the next 20 and 50 years, some of these risks would need to be addressed.
The original question I was asking, it was leading to that graphic that you presented at the end, which showed low-hanging fruit. And then like this would require more investigation and just wanting to understand if it was mainly the stormwater issue that was leading to that differentiation in zone. And if so, just feeling a little bit wary about dividing things up and like setting our sites too narrow. And if there becomes a version of the project that's like, well, this just seems less complicated, so let's just do this. And then we have to deal with the other thing later, or we don't do it and we miss out on opportunity. And so I guess I'm just questioning the, like, painting with the broad brush when there's still, it sounds like, some pretty good pathways to exploring, you know, the viability of the system as it is for that whole area.
Yeah, I would say that it wasn't, that our concern sort of in the southern part of the area isn't solely the sort of Taggart D line. There are concerns from PBOT about Powell and a little bit division in Cesar Chavez. So, you know, the idea would be that we would be able, there's actually some considerable overlap in terms of what we would have to do, perhaps, to correct the Taggart D and also rebuild parts of the Powell and Division. And so the thing is, is there may be like an opportunity to do sort of a unified capital improvement project, which is a very trendy sort of concept now, that you could actually just sort of advance this all as one thing to support growth. And so that was actually exciting, an exciting piece of that finding.
Sorry, Vice Chair Thompson, just wanted to maybe jump in to say, I think this is just, this was just an analysis to help inform what it would take to get there and to be aware of where there may be, you know, something may be taxing on the overall system and to understand what that is and, you know, what some costs would be associated to address those infrastructure constraints or gaps. And so it's really just, it's, again, a study to inform a future planning process. I think that we can certainly think about how to use this information to approach the planning process going forward, keeping in mind some of the things that you said. I mean, I think, you know, we're operating at a time where there's some really constrained capital budgets for many of the bureaus. And so it's also, and they have, you know, I think Ryan was explaining that they, in addition to where they need to potentially augment infrastructure to support growth, they also have their asset management plans where regardless of whether there's growth or not, just the existing condition, there are, you know, there are areas where the system, the pipes are at risk and that they need to make improvements. So there's always this kind of like, sort of balancing of where to take, to put those limited capital funds, honestly. And so I think that this is a starting point. We will, you know, be using this information to explore further what it really means for some of the area planning for this area in the future.
Commissioner Speevak.
Thank you. Well, I'm thrilled those projects happened because this is a precedent before the city can start the housing production strategy task, which we adopted through the city council to look at rezoning these areas and not just look at it to rezone these areas. That's what the housing production strategy has. So I guess my question for staff is like, now we got the information. Are we staffing up for this? Is it like, is it a happening thing? So an update on that would be great. And I'm not going to dwell on the historic district things now, but I will hope that as the city does this, that we recognize the history of applying the lowest density zoning to the highest, most affluent areas of our city. Goes back to the 1940s, the war code. Read that over. You can see the exception where you can divide any home you want to multiple units unless it's in a single one or two dwelling zone, which happens to be some of the same areas that data became historic districts. And then it became discretionary process to do it. And so to keep doing that again and again, sort of like, using different tricks of the trade. Before World War II, it was exclusionary deed notices, so people couldn't live there. But if it keeps coming back and again and again, we should be aware of that. And maybe not pre, I mean, there's politics. I totally get the politics of it. But, and politics is what happened to city council. But maybe before it goes to city council, we can keep sort of like a level treatment across the area. Back to the first question of like, are we ready to do it?
Commissioners, I mean, I think the purpose of bringing this to you today was to let you know our progress on something that is part of the housing production strategy. This was, we consider this a building block to the future project. I think that your input right now is helpful to give us a sense of your perspective on this. I don't think we have too much more to share at this time. We have been applying for grants to get resources to do the next phases of this work. And, you know, we have some funding that was from a federal grant. We think that funding is stable, but, you know, those things are still a little bit in flux. And we are seeking other funding opportunities. So I think we'll have more to report in the future. It is our intention to build on this work and to figure out what the, you know, what is the next phase of this project that we can do with the resources that we're able to amass. And getting your kind of early, sort of, you know, feedback and thinking on this is helpful to guide our future work. So we appreciate that.
Chair Ralph.
He's shaking his head. I think that would be, yes, I think so. Because then PBOT would be able to make sort of the types of investments that would allow them to more proactively address some of those issues. I'm thinking it's of the scale of like 82nd Avenue in terms of the types of, you know, it's like the whole, it's a big street and it has a lot of need. I would, yeah, I think so. I think that they would be in our, when we were making assumptions about how many people were using bikes and transit and walking in this area, was assuming that we had made some investments that made those things easier. And so like I said, when we started to take away auto trips and we saw that many of these areas of congestion started to disappear from the model. And so, you know, we think that those are worthwhile investments to continue. And when we, you know, Trimeste was mentioned and, you know, PBOT said to us, well, if we were to consider this, then we would want to reconsider how we prioritize, say, the FX on, say, Burnside, you know, versus somewhere else in the city. And would that make more sense if this were on the table?
And Chair Ralph, sorry for, your little yellow hand doesn't show up when you're in like the little view. So thank you for your patience. Other comments or questions? Chair Ralph not seeing any hands in the room.
Sure. So DRAC is the Development Resource Advisory Committee. And it has about 15 members, something like that. And I've served on it for almost three years, it's three-year terms. And I am inclined to step off of it. This one else has a chance to represent the Planning Commission on that group. They meet monthly. I'm happy to spend more time with anyone who's interested in thinking about it. I am willing to continue on, but I kind of think it'd be good to pass the baton. The group receives updates from not just like what's in the planning pipeline, but also how regulations are changing by PBOT, BES, water, that impact development. It's got a mix of people who are in the development world. Also, they go through like when they're updating the permit processes, trying to make that go work more smoothly. Especially now that it's all consolidated in PP&amp;D, it's easier to do that. And sometimes I learn about planning projects first from DRAC because we always get visits from planning staff there as well. So it's a great group. And I think it's, if you want to keep your finger on the pulse of what's happening with development and development in Portland, it's a good opportunity. There's different represented groups in DRAC. It's sort of purposely a distribution, but there's one seat reserved for the Planning Commission. And I'll just leave it at that. I think the term runs until November of this year. It's not like imminent, changing. But if anyone has any interest in learning more about it, then contact me and I'll be happy to share.
Excuse me, Commissioner Speevak, Patricia Deefen for the record. I wanted to just maybe offer that this is a great introduction to this opportunity. And maybe we could have folks go back and think about their, you know, schedules and their interests. And then maybe we could talk about this further in the items of interest at the next meeting. And in the meantime, if anyone wants more information, you're certainly welcome to reach out to Commissioner Speevak. Or we can also, Autumn can send you some information by email about, you know, just about DRAC, the website information, so you could see a little bit more about the function and role of that group. Thank you so much.